I'd like to welcome you to our regular board meeting this evening. We have been involved in a special board meeting from five until this time. So, we're thankful that you're here and glad that we can start this evening with Mr. Ron, Dr. Ron Godbolt, with Word of Truth Ministry to lead us in our invocation, which will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will, all please rise.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for this day. You blessed us to see. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for this meeting and coming together as citizens, and we pray that you would give us the wisdom, as you gave Solomon, that he could lead his people. Lord, we thank you for the wisdom you're going to give these leaders of this community, that they work together, and your name gets all the glory. We thank you for all that you've done and how you continue to bless us and keep us and protect us from all harm and evil. For that, we give you all the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. And, Dr. Godbolt, I hope you're going to continue to be a part of Hope Mills, even though I know that you were relocating our church.
Yes, ma'am. I'm committed to that.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate you so much. Easter sunrise service.
Yes. I'm on my way.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
At this time, do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to have a second?
Begging.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. At this time, I'm going to ask the board if they will go down in front of our desk. We have a special presentation this evening, and I would like to read this, and then I will follow, I'll come down with them. As many of you know, Ms. Adams, our town manager, is retiring. She's worked in municipal government for nearly thirty years, wearing many hats and serving many roles. She began as a deputy town clerk, tax collector, for the town of Pine Bluff, North Carolina, from 1992 to 2001. In 2001, she joined the town of Carthage, serving as the town clerk, development administrator. She was also appointed deputy finance officer in 2008. Melissa was hired as town clerk for the town of Hope Mills in March 2011. April 2012, she was appointed interim human resources administrator and served in that capacity until September 2013. In January 2017, she was appointed town manager, the first female to serve in that role. Melissa's had many accomplishments during her time in municipal government. She's certified municipal clerk since 2002, a master municipal clerk since March 2009. She's a noted Republic. She's had numerous FEMA's Emerging Management classes. She's served as a mentor for new clerks from 2011 to 2016 with International Institute for Municipal Clerks. She was appointed to the Board of Directors for the North Carolina League of Municipalities in October 2014 and served until September 2017. She served on the Legislative Committee, the Membership Committee, the Finance Committee, the Mentor Program, State Certification Committee, Program and Education Committee, 2016 IIMC Site Selection Committee, and the NCAMC Executive Board for the North Carolina Association of Municipal Clerks. She was also appointed and served as the District Director for NCAMC District 7, 2012, 2014, and 2014 and 2015. She served as a member volunteer representing for local government, Federal Credit Union, and the UNC School of Government Municipal Administration course she took in April of 2018. The other thing that I would just like to say is that, for me, this is a bittersweet moment, because when I became mayor, it's when Melissa and I sort of joined forces together in town of Hope Mills. I'm greatly going to miss her. It's because of many things that she's mentored me and helped me as far as knowing what a mayor's supposed to do, because you don't come with a box of rules and ideas of what to do when you're elected in official capacity that you've never done before. So, I appreciate all that she's done for me and all that she continues to do in her role as an advocate for the town of Hope Mills. We have a special presentation tonight. She's going to be with us till March 31st, and there is actually a retirement celebration on that day. But tonight, we thought since this is would be her official last board member, we wanted to recognize her for all the things that she's done for our board and for the town of Hope Mills and for our staff. So, Melissa, you'll come forward. We have a special presentation from the board. We'd like to get a picture of you with the board also. This is a special plaque presented, and it reads, "On Your Retirement, April 1st, 2021. Thanks for your many years of dedicated service." And this is presented to Melissa, and I want to get you in the middle up here, so we can get a little clearer. You want one mask down?
Yeah, that would look more appropriate.
I got a mask down, too. Yeah. I'm asking you to mask down less, so.
Well, thank you. I just want to say it's been an absolute pleasure working for the citizens of town of Hope Mills, and I'm going to miss them. Working alongside the employees, it is bittersweet. I'm going to miss everybody. I've made some really good, really good lifelong friends here, and I'm going to miss them. I am. But it has, there's been, there's been so many days that, you know, I just, it sometimes, you know, it can be a thankless job, but then you get that, that one person, you know, that thanks you, and it makes it all worthwhile. And the citizens here are great, and it has, it's been an absolute pleasure working for the citizens and, and working alongside the employees. You know, the employees here are the greatest, and I'm going to miss them. And I think the world of them, so. But thank you, thank you. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you so much. Oops, sorry.
Also, we have with us this evening, Mr. Bill Zell, and he will be our interim town manager, Mr. Zell. So, if you'll stand so that people can see you, recognize this is, he'll be, he starts officially this evening, and he will be here with Melissa to be trained until March 31st, and then he'll assume full responsibility. Thank you for coming this evening, sir.
Thank you so much.
Next, I have a special proclamation. Whereas the Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary conducted its 106th year of volunteer service to America, whereas year after year, the organization continues to honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by maintaining memorials to their service and sharing their history with our nation's youth, so that what our nation's veterans have done for America will not be forgotten. Whereas Veterans of Foreign Wars Auxiliary supports the troops currently deployed overseas, whereas the 470,000 members represent families of those who have served or are currently on foreign soil protecting our freedom. Whereas members volunteer nearly 1 million hours in Veterans Affairs Medical Centers and other hospitals throughout this country. Whereas the organization provides awards and scholarships to students based on their expression of patriotism through art, speech, and volunteerism. Whereas the 2021 National President Sandra Answelter is rallying VFW auxiliary members behind her theme, honoring our mission to serve veterans. And whereas March 31st, 2021, will be a time to celebrate her visit to North Carolina. Now, therefore, I do hereby proclaim, March 31st, 2021, honoring our mission to serve veterans today, in recognition of the National President Sandra Answelter and all members of the VFW Auxiliary for their outstanding volunteer service to veterans and their families, to the town of Hope Mills, and our great country. And we do have several Veteran Foreign Wars Auxiliary units here in Hope Mills, one at the 10-6-30, and one at 6-70. Both are very active, and I personally have been involved, not because I was a spouse, but because I was a daughter and a granddaughter, and I have brothers and nephews that are military attached. So, it is a very worthwhile organization, and those of you that, who have spouses that have, have a reason to join and are qualified to join, I would highly recommend it, because it does a great deal of service for Hope Mills and for our veterans in Hope Mills. Next, I have a brief update by Parks and Rec Director Lamarcus Morrison on the design bill for a freestanding restroom at the Thomas Campbell Oakman Chapel. And I'll turn it over to Lamarcus Morrison.
First of all, I would like to say that's perhaps the shortest deadline I've ever been given, but I'm up for the challenge. You all should have gotten hot off the press. Actually, got it this morning, a conceptual drawing that shows a couple of elevations and a floor plan, hopefully.
Yes, sir.
And I've talked, I wish we had a, I wish we had a overhead. We need to get one of those, Drew, so I can actually show the people what we're talking about sometimes. But, but I'll do a presentation next time around. I'll do a presentation next time around, and I'll show these elevations. But what you have in front of you is very, very preliminary. I met with a couple of design bill teams this week, but the sketch is, because I wanted to get a rough magnitude of order, which is a preliminary cost, square foot cost, before we actually got into it. Just to give you all an idea of what this restroom is going to cost, so that you're very much aware of what the design piece is going to be and what the construction piece is going to be. So, we did make that happen this week, but before we get into that, I just want to let you know the steps. I went through first, just to make sure I was on the right track, make sure that, you know, that was following building codes, because there was a lot of information and a little bit of confusion about what was required based on the building, the occupancy, et cetera. And so, the first thing I did last Monday was met with the chief building inspector, Kenny Tatum, and, you know, went through what the building's going to be used for. It's going to be in assembly, which is A3 building code of ninety, I think it's ninety people occupancy. And so, that pretty much dictates what the size of the restroom is going to be, et cetera. And so, with that, we know that we have to have a restroom that would, would be adequate for forty-five men and forty-five women. It does require, just to be consistent, it's going to require two water closets or, or two stalls, if you will, per, so two for men, two for women, one of each, which will have to be ADA compliant. Has to have at least one lavatory or water fountain. And as far as the ADA requirements, there's a little bit of confusion whether it can be a standalone restroom or whether it can be attached. So, it could be a standalone building, from what I'm told, but it's still going to have to have a ramp from the, from the chapel, which the drawing shows, and it's going to have to be covered. So, essentially, you can look at that as an attachment, if you will, because it has to be a covered walkway elevated and with the access from the building. In addition to that, because we're going to be use, use an outside area as a plaza, then the drawing also shows a ramp to the building from the other side. Both exits have to be ADA, both exits have to be ADA compliant as well. And just one other thing. So, those are the ADA requirements. So, Thursday last week, I met with one of two design bill firms. The first one is JCE Consulting Engineers, which is half the team of, design building team, what is it, Commercial Builders? Yeah, Commercial Building Incorporated. So, JCE did the actual rough drawing or sketch, and then Commercial Builders came back with a cost, a square foot cost, and I'll share that with you in a few minutes. But as far as, as far as the breakdown of the cost, the design piece of that is not the bulk of it. So, the design piece to do the, the engineering, the structural, MEP, et cetera, is going to be $10,000. Now, the actual cost of construction, including the ramps, the building, is $118,420. So, don't want you to get sticker shot, but that's, that's the, the rough cost based on the square footage and a couple of the unknowns. And I'll actually share that with you. I just got the cost estimate a little bit later on this afternoon. One of the things that the, the architect engineer did not show is the covering, so there's not a cost for that. So, I went back through my old cost estimates, and I put in a $8,000 allowance for the covered walkway. Maybe cheaper, but at least I know that's a good number based on a covering that I've done in the past. So, roughly, a design bill contract, including the design, is going to be about $136,420. And then, as far as the turnaround time, the, the estimated schedule is twelve weeks to complete after permits are received. So, after this, receive a building permit, and all the budgetary funding is in place, you're looking at a twelve-week turnaround time. So, with that, I'll take any questions you may have. It's early on in the process. We just wanted to get an idea of what it would look like and what the rough cost would be, just to let you all know what that would look like as we go into the budgetary season.
Questions from anyone from Mr. Morrison? Questions? No questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Okay, this evening, we have several public hearings, and what we did this evening to a little different than, than normal is that we asked for a sign up for public hearings, and the reason for doing this is that we had been made aware that potentially we could have a large number of people here. So, what we were trying to do was to make it so that we could be fair to everyone, give everyone opportunity. It appears that as far as the public hearings go, in all cases, we can go with a normal procedure of public hearing. Do you have any other than the one, I will not put a time limit on, we were going to if we had a large number, but for speaking for the first hearing, there's five with, I don't know how many public comments do you have, Ms. Starling, that were sent in by email?
I had the one that was asked about for tonight, and she said she was fine with me delivering a printed copy to.
Okay, so everyone, this does not have to be read if they, I mean, let the board read it.
Correct.
Okay. So, if everyone will first draw attention to the one that is before you, and if you have not done so, there is one that was sent to you, and this one was sent from Lori Ann Stanky, and you got this via way of an email also today, if you read your emails. Okay, at this time, we're going to, I need a motion to open the public hearing, and at this time, do we need, Mr. McLachlan, do you need to have anything as far as presentation to this or just open hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Have a motion to open the hearing. What we'll be doing is, this hearing will, is there anyone here that would like to speak against this hearing? I'll read what it's for. The hearing is a public hearing on the intention to close the Crampton Road right away from the Crenshaw Drive intersection to the Par Four Village property. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this proposal to close this road? Seeing none. At this time, our first speaker is Maria. If you will, introduce yourself and give your address and come to the microphone at this time.
Yes, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board and neighbors.
If you will wait for just one moment, let me fix the mic.
Okay. Now, good evening, everybody. We live in 5717 Crenshaw Drive. A little bit over three years, we purchased our home, moved from Florida. We chose the neighborhood because it was an established neighborhood, peaceful and quiet. My husband came over. He went by during the day, during the night. It was fantastic. So, if they open Crampton, everything is going to change. So, if it, if it counts in any way, we would like to keep our peace and quiet.
Yes, thank you.
That'll be it.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Letgan now?
Take this off, and I'll take my glasses with me. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Adams, congratulations on your retirement and staff. I was going to get up here with a long speech and talk to y'all about what we've talked about for the last year, but I think we've said enough of it. There's, there's just one major concern that we developed here over the weekend, once we got the agenda that was coming for the night. There's one area on the order that the ordinance, NS 2021-03, order closing Crampton Road in bullet number four. A lot of concern and talk about this. The no individual property owner in the vicinity of the street or in the subdivision in which it is located will be deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress to his or her property. And I don't know if you can ask questions at a public hearing. If not, I'll make a statement. We, the, the interest here.
Ma'am, I mean, can you, can you enlighten us on that bullet point? Just, I mean, explain it to us what it means.
You actually have to find that as a, as a board, you have to determine that you're closing the road doesn't deprive property owners of ingress, egress to their property in order to close the property, close the road. If you didn't make that finding, you wouldn't have that authority to close the road.
So, I guess, I, and I wanted clarification on that. I was asked earlier, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, so taking your time. But so, so what, so I guess his question to me earlier was, does that mean it stays, that people can still use it, or it's closed, it's closed, right?
It's closed. It's permanently closed. What all it means is that by closing that road, you're not depriving someone of access to their property. In other words, they're not now landlocked because they have no means of egress, egress to their property.
Even Par Four?
Correct. As long as they have access from some other location, then that's, that's the finding. The finding is that closing this road will not deprive them of access to their property.
Excuse me, ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Then, as we speak, then Par Four has another use that they could get into their property, correct?
That is my understanding. That's what the board needs to find as a finding fact, if you want to close the road.
Goffview driveway is their choice, will be their driveway.
Thank you, ma'am, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. I do want to thank the, Ms. Adams and their staff for all the assistance we've had in the last year. We've had a lot of crazy questions coming your way, and we appreciate your patience with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted clarification. He asked me earlier, and I really didn't know what to tell him.
Thank you. And Michael Gillis?
I'm sorry. I got to take, golly, it takes a long time to get undressed here. I really had a speech written, but I'm not going to use it, thankfully. I really want to thank you all for your support that we received finally, a little bit over a month ago, voting to start the process to close Crampton Road, because it would have definitely had a negative impact upon the neighborhood, and we all know that. And I want to thank you, Ms. Adams and staff, Hope Mills cooperating with us and helping us out, and you all for your, your cooperation as well, too. And I still encourage you to vote 5-0 to permanently close Crampton Road.
Thank you, sir. Julia Warfel?
Okay. I just wanted to have one more clarification, that the owner that has the property on Par Four land does have a way to get in and out of his property and not using Crampton Road. Is that correct?
That is correct. They currently have their, their easement right on out to Goffview, but what they're, they're working on is a common driveway to be shared by both developers, and that's where, right now, they're in those negotiation stages. But it'll, their driveway will be on Goffview.
Okay. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Eddie Mayner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, member of council. Good to see you. I was going to make some comments, but as the others have said, I don't see that that's necessary at this point. I just want to ensure you and thank you, because I, I feel that the residents that live in our subdivision, it's not been any of our intentions to make your jobs any harder than what you already have or make things tough for you. But I did want to reemphasize the integrity of the neighborhood is very important. It's an old established neighborhood. As you all know, we have a lot of senior citizen residents, a lot of children in that area, and certainly, we know that growth and we know that development is coming, but it's always that we need smart growth and smart development in Hope Mills and looking way down the road. So, with that to say, I'm very grateful. I served on the committee, and I'm very grateful for the support that the residents, my fellow neighbors, have shown in the, this ongoing project. But certainly, I'm hoping tonight that we will see a unanimous vote in keeping that street closed permanently. So, with that, again, I thank all of you for your time, and thank you for your willingness to serve our community. And with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for the service that you've given the town of Hope Mills. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of the closing of Crampton?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Madam Mayor, I also like to make a motion to approve ordinance, NS 2021-03, order to permanently close the Crampton Road stub effective March 15th, 2021.
Second. Have a motion, and at this time, if you will, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, Crampton Road is officially closed on March 15th, 2021. And thank you very much. And I appreciate the citizens. I appreciate the large numbers. I appreciate the emails that sometimes we felt like we needed to answer, but in some cases, we didn't answer, because again, we knew that we were working on the process, and this is, the process has happened. So, I want you to know that you've done a great job, excellent job, and we hope that in future, when we need, you need, we need your support for whatever project is coming toward Hope Mills, that you'll help us and be an advocate for that, too, because sometimes we get so involved in not my neighborhood, we've got to remember that all of Hope Mills is, is ours, and so we want to protect the whole town. So, you've done a great job, and I appreciate, appreciate everything that you've done, and I also appreciate the fact that former Commissioner, Mr. Mayner, agreed to serve on.
Have a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Madam Mayor, I also like to make a motion to approve ordinance, NS 2021-03, order to permanently close the Crampton Road stub effective March 15, 2021.
Second. Have a motion, and at this time, if you will, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, Crampton Road is officially closed on March 15, 2021. And thank you very much. And I appreciate the citizens, I appreciate the large numbers, I appreciate the emails that sometimes we felt like we needed to answer, but in some cases, we didn't answer, because again, we knew that we were working on the process, and this is the process that's happened. So I want you to know that you've done a great job, excellent job. And we hope that in future, when we need, we need your support for whatever project is coming toward Hope Mills, that you'll help us and be an advocate for that, too. Because sometimes we get so involved in not my neighborhood, we've got to remember that all of Hope Mills is ours. And so we want to protect the whole town. So you've done a great job, and I appreciate everything that you've done. And I also appreciate the fact that former Commissioner, Mr. Mayner, agreed to serve on committee. The committee will continue to have a meeting, because before the actual plan comes back to the board, the committee has to approve it. So whatever their development design is and whatever they plan on doing, it's still got to make one more step before it's final. So I just wanted you to know that also. But again, yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, just a second, please.
Yes, sir.
I would like to personally thank each and every one of you who have come to this meeting and done things in an orderly manner and the way it should have been done. Mr. Mayner, I not only thank you for your past service, but for your service with this committee in leading them to what they thought was the right thing. And I, down deep in my heart, believe it's the right thing. Because like I said before, I lived on a dead end street, and they opened it up. I know what it's all about, trust me. So congratulations, guys. Let's just do it the right way from here on out.
Thank you. Next, we have case P 21-11, rezoning of 2.54 acres from CP planned commercial, MP planned industrial, and RTN residential to C1P planned local business or to a more restrictive zoning district located at the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Service Road 1132 Legion Road and North Carolina 162 Elk Road, submitted by David Murray, Legion Road Investments LLC, Queensway LLC, CE Properties LLC, and Dorothy M. and Edward R. Riddle Owners and Peter Doster Agent, Hope Mills. And I'll turn it over at this time to Mr. McLaughlin.
Can we hold up this a second, Madam Mayor? See, that was a quick second, wasn't it?
And this is behind your tab two.
Hello, Madam Mayor, I'm Board, Districted Board. As stated, this is case P 2111. It's a consideration of request, rezone 2.54 acres of land. The subject tract is a collection of two property and a small portion of another at the southeastern intersection of Legion Road and Elk Road totaling 2.54 acres. 4173 Legion Road is zoned under the CP planned commercial district with 4031 Elk Road regulated under the R75 residential district. The applicant is also proposing to include a portion of 4115 Legion Road, which is zoned and developed under the MP planned industrial district into the overall tract as well. 4173 Legion Road is currently developed with a childcare facility with a private residence constructed on 4031 Elk Road. This intersection is a well-established commercial node with a variety of uses with institutional residential uses in the surrounding zone as well. In terms of the proposal, the applicant is proposing a 5,200 square foot Circle K convenience store with vehicular access off of Legion Road and Elk Road and cross lateral access to the adjacent industrial zone parcel. The proposed design contemplates 30 on-site parking spaces and would accommodate nine double-sided pumps. There are two proposed dumpster pads, and the site will maintain 50-foot front yard setbacks off of both Legion and Elk Roads. There's also a deceleration lane proposed along Legion Road to comply with NC DOT standards. In terms of traffic, NC DOT has no obligations to this proposal. The request is in compliance with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan recommendation of heavy commercial and light industrial. And Cumberland County staff, as well as Hope Mills staff, is recommending approval of this case. It was approved unanimously at the planning board on February 16. I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have. I do have the site plan.
Commissioner Marley has a question?
This past week, I was contacted by citizens that attend Southview Baptist Church, and they weren't in opposition or anything. They just wanted to know if a privacy fence or something separating the Quick Stop from the church property would be put up. I think they just had some concern, they wanted a little, you know...
Yeah.
They wanted to know if a fence or something separating it would be...
The, and that's a good question, too. On the site plan, it does show an eight-foot assumed buffer in terms of width, but this northern portion of the property does a butt residential, so there is a privacy fence that would be required. It's, but the key is, it's only... Here to, right around here, is where you have the privacy fence. It basically has to have a privacy fence where the butt's residential. But they do have, they have it listed as an assumed buffer, but I can talk to them, because in my world, they do have the ability to do a buffer in whatever ways they want. Most of the times, when you have establishments like this, they will choose a privacy fence as a buffer. But I will confirm, that is a requirement, but I will work with them to make sure that comes up.
I appreciate it, because like I said, they weren't in opposition of it. They just wanted a privacy fence for, you know...
Typically, the two Circle Ks that we have approved, one on Cumberland and Main, had the same issue, and they put their privacy fence up there as well.
Well, I told them I'd ask.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we have other questions?
We need to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, is there anyone who would like to speak against this proposal? Okay, we do have some that have signed up to speak in favor. And first is Andy Pride. Okay, is that Peter Doster?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, if you'll come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. My name is Peter Doster. I'm with Bowman Consulting, representing Circle K as the civil engineering consultant. I'm just here to answer any questions, but as Chancellor pointed out, we are looking to rezone to CP1, the combination of three different lots. And we are going to be, you know, abutting, I'm sorry, a purchased property on the other side of the cross access road off of Elk. But that's not part of this rezoning, just in reference to the spacing between us and the Baptist church. But I don't, if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer anything related to combination plots.
Does anybody have questions? Questions? Anybody have questions?
The only thing, the only one I have is that fence.
And I've had one question that was brought to my attention, and that is that you're in the midst of a high school, a middle school, elementary school, and of course, the church, that are all very active and very busy. They were concerned about, not only traffic, but they were concerned about what kind of provisions there would be, and this would be something after the store opens, but they were just concerned that, just general concerns for high school-aged kids and the fact that getting across the street and safety issues. So I think that was, their concern was, they know it's gonna be a place they go, but they also don't want somebody to get hurt crossing Elk Road or Legion.
Understood. We do have, we have a proposed crosswalk connecting the roadway sidewalk to our building for pedestrians. It is gonna be a, you know, well-lit site. That's definitely a priority. The candle foots around the site are, you know, gonna be, you know, of the regulation for nighttime and everything like that. So from a standpoint of safety, when it comes to visual and, you know, crossing and vehicles coming in and out of the site, I would say that it's gonna be, you know, upholding standards that way. But as far as crossing the roads, I mean, we have pedestrian crosswalks at the intersection. And...
I think that, and that would be, again, it'd be on the school to make sure that they use crosswalks and don't, you can see where you are at the back of the building, next to the church. That's right in front of the entrance to Southview Middle School. And then right up from there is the entrance to Southview High School. And that's where you're gonna have the kids after school or before school cutting across. And I think that was the concern, was the fact that, just making sure that it's safe, because it would be, it would open up a lot of activity, which there's already, that has happened with the shopping center across the street. So I understood their concerns, and the church, too, was concerned because of the, what he had mentioned, but also the increase in traffic, but we understand.
Yeah, I mean, for all, for all the two cross access roads, and you can call them, you know, kind of intersect roads, you know, we'll have proper signage, stop bars, striping, things like that nature for the cars. And so, you know, as far as crossing, I don't see a huge concern with any pedestrians accessing the site with the traffic around. But yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Anyone have anything? Have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Okay, have a motion to close public hearing. Now, is there any action?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion in the case P 2111. The town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners votes to approve the rezoning from CP planned commercial, RTN residential, and MP planned industrial to CP planned local business and found this request consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 designation of heavy commercial and light industrial. The heavy commercial designation is designed to provide for shopping needs of the immediate neighborhood, and traveling public is usually located near major intersections. Approval of the request is reasonable and of public interest. As the district is requested, it's in harmony with surrounding existing land uses. Zoning, and the site is located at a heavily trafficked intersection.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. McLaughlin, just for a point of reference, that area is in the town of Hope Mills?
Yes, yes.
Because I know there was also a question, had it been annexed then, because that was a no man's land for a while.
The zoning map even looks really confusing, but it is in the town, especially when they carved off that industrial piece. But this is completely in town.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, we have case P 21-14, rezoning of one plus or minus acres from RTN residential to CP planned commercial or to a more restrictive zoning district located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Service Road 1246 Elmwood Drive and North Carolina 59 Hope Mills Road, submitted by Joseph and Trina Riddle and Paul Joseph and Mary Hazel Dietzen. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin for, this is case behind tab three.
As stated by Madam Mayor, this is case P 2114, a request to rezone one acre of land from RTN to CP. On the subject property, it's one acre in size, and it is an assemblage of two parcels located at the southwestern intersection of Elmwood Drive and Hope Mills Road. Both parcels have residential structures with one addressed as 5621 Elmwood Drive and the other addressed as 5615 Elmwood Drive. As it relates to the surrounding zoning, the areas to the immediate south and east are well-established commercial corridors with the area to the immediate west developed with residential uses. The area to the immediate and far north is also established, an established corridor as well under the commercial zoning district. The applicant is proposing to combine these two parcels into the Mill Village project that was recently approved, and I had the site plan up in a few, that was recently approved by the Hope Mills Board of Commissioners. The area to the immediate south was approved for a large commercial development with the two subject properties needed for vehicular access providing a secondary entrance to the overall development. As these parcels are residency zoned, they have to be rezoned in order to be added to the previously approved commercial development. DOT has no objections to this site, and it is in compliance with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan designation of heavy commercial. You see the subject property hashed at the intersection of Elmwood and Hope Mills Road. This is a makeup of the land uses. What you'll see is your commercial land uses in red and your single-family land uses in yellow. So you'll see to the far west is your established residence, but along Hope Mills Road, that is a pretty well-established commercial corridor. This is just another outlook of the surrounding zoning. These are your hydrogen, hydroconclusion soils. This is the compliance with the Southwest plan. And these are your site photographs. This is a view of the subject property. This is another view directly at the subject property. This is the west view along Elmwood Drive. Subject property is on the left side of the screen. This is a north view of the subject property, well, basically standing at the subject property, looking across. This is the east view along Elmwood. Subject property is to the right. And this is the previously approved Elmwood. This is the site beside Sonic, for reference. The reason why I put this up is you guys have already approved the Mill Village development, but the area outlined in red is the subject property's connection to that. So as you can see, when you initially approved it, this part, these two parcels were left off because they needed to go through a rezoning. The original Mill Village was already zoned commercial. So it just came through as a site plan approval, but they wanted to actually bring these other two pieces in so that they can get a secondary entrance to the site off of Elmwood. That would create a little better flow of traffic. But I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Anyone have questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chancellor, I'm glad you put this up, because I wanted to ensure that my memory was correct, and I think it is, that there's a roadway between the subject property and the residential RTN property that's behind the subject property. Am I, I think I'm correct?
You talking about...
That roadway right there in the back.
Right here?
Uh, I can't see where you're pointing. Yeah, right there.
That's proposed.
Yeah, that's a proposed roadway.
Yes.
I thought that's how the site plan was laid out, because that would have answered the other question I had about a privacy fence barrier if that roadway wasn't there. Because across from that is the RTN residential piece.
Yes. So if this was just parcel, abutting parcel, and it was commercial residential, then that would apply.
Okay.
But the roadway going through there kind of negates it.
Yeah, that, so, so thank you for putting that up.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll open our public hearing. And I know that we have Mr. Riddle here to speak in favor of this. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Riddle at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and members of the town board. Appreciate you, your work and your time you spend doing what you do. I'm really just here for questions, if there are any. Part of this, this plan has been devised because DOT is planning on putting an island in this section of Hope Mills Road. You know, they've done, I guess, what, Rockfish Road to Camden Road, and then the next phase, I guess, is Camden to the Hope Mills bypass. It's on the plan. I'm trying to think if it's been funded. You know, DOT kind of got, with everybody being in lockdown and not using much gas for a year, they kind of ran out of money, I think. So some of their stuff's been put off. I'm not real sure about their timing. It's put off some, but I had gotten a leftover approved at the main entrance to this development, and they're also gonna put one at Elmwood. So if you were leaving Hope Mills and you were heading back towards Fayetteville, you'll be able to make lefts into this track at two points, at the main entrance, and then at Elmwood. So that was the reasoning behind the connection. Also, I own a lot behind that brown area that would be kind of a buffer between me and the... There's, I have a lot right here. Then there's another empty lot, and then there's a house. So it is buffering some from the houses. And it's not a real large development. I mean, there's some bad land there. I mean, you know, this, I understand this was a lake bed a long time ago. Some of the people that have been in Hope Mills a long time maybe remember that. But years ago, we built that Advance Auto, and I tell you, Hope Mills is a good, a good business town. That Advance Auto was out back then in the middle of nowhere, and I was amazed at how well they did there. So the idea, too, I was gonna try to connect that back driveway to them, because they wouldn't have access to those lefts if I didn't do that. So it was a tricky site. There's been a lot of work trying to get, you know, wetlands terminated, and we're gonna have to put a big retention pond, you can see back in the back left corner. to have to put a big retention pond, you can see back in the back left corner. But I've got some good things in store, working on a couple of things at Hope Mills right now. I've got another parcel that's going to come to y'all that's going to the planning board tomorrow night, so I'm going to bring some good stuff to Hope Mills. And I appreciate working with y'all, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Joe?
Yes, sir.
Nice work.
Thank you.
Really, really is nice work.
Thank you.
I mean, you put a lot of time, a lot of effort into this site plan, and to make it work for just about everybody that's going to travel up Hope Mills Road because of those islands. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
At this time, is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of or against this development? If not, any question?
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing. At this time, is there any other questions that you would have? If not, do we have action?
Madam Mayor, I'd make a motion in case P 21-14. The Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners vote to approve the rezoning request from R10 Residential to CP Plan Commercial and finds the request consistent with the Southwest Cumberland Land Use Plan 2013 designation of heavy commercial and low, low-density residential. The heavy commercial designation provides for the shopping needs of the immediate neighborhood and the traveling public. Both designations desire public water and sewer. Approval of the request is reasonable and in the public interest as the district requested is in harmony with surrounding existing land uses and zoning.
I'll take it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor, I only have one question from Mr. Riddle. Are you guys playing ball? Let me talk to LaMarco back there.
Playing ball, he said?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all grown up now. Man, I'm missing out. When's, when's the season starting soon?
Talk to LaMarco Morrison back there. He can hook you up.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have case P 21-15, rezoning of .18 plus or minus acres, .8, plus or minus acres from R6 Residential to R15 Residential, CZ conditional zoning for recreation amusement, public, private, not operated as a business for profit, or to a more restrictive zoning district located at 5439 Fountain Lane. Submitted by Chancellor McLaughlin on Town of, Town of Hope Mills. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Okay. As stated, this is a 0.1 acre parcel, addressed as 5439 Fountain Lane. It's recently purchased by the Town of Hope Mills. The site is currently vacant and fronts approximately 84 feet along Fountain Lane with the Hope Mills Lake property located along the red property line. As it relates to the surrounding zoning, the area immediate to, immediately adjacent to the east and west of the property regulate, is regulated under the residential zoning district and developed as such, although there is residential zoning to the rear of the property, that property exists as Hope Mills Lake, zoned under the R15 residential district. In terms of the proposal, Hope Mills is looking to consolidate this parcel with the Hope Mills Lake property to utilize it as parking and also as a secondary access point to our lake for vehicular traffic. The use of the lot is also associated with the current improvements to the existing Big T's establishment, with the approximately 10 parking spaces anticipated on this parcel. Six-foot privacy fences are also proposed along both side property lines to comply with buffering requirements. And from a zoning perspective, this request also brings consistency to the lake park with uniform zoning for both parcels. In terms of DOT coordination, they have indicated that they would recommend that this connection, in terms of the driveway be spaced as far away from NC 59 to maximize any vehicular storage necessary. Cumberland County staff recommendation is for approval. And let me get into some of the zoning. As stated, you can see the makeup of the surrounding zoning area, although the area to the southeast is R15, that is the lake property, so it's not like that's an established neighborhood, but there is an established neighborhood across the street from the lake to the north and to the, what I would call northwest. This is another breakdown of the land use. As you can see, to the north and northwest, you have the established single-family in yellow. At the intersection of Johnson and Main and across the street, you do have the established commercial corridor along Main Street. This is some area photographs that give you another kind of outlook on the zoning. This is your water and sewer hydrogen and hydroconclusion soils. The plan is not compliant with the southwest land use, land use plan that calls for medium-density residential. And this is the layout of that proposed parking. So what you see is, to the left side of the screen, that's the entrance off of Fountain Lane, and to the right side, that's basically the consolidated entrance now into the Big T's parking lot. So at the end of the day, this development will achieve the existing parking off of the Main Street to the lake, and now you have a secondary entrance off of Fountain Lane to our lake property. From my understanding from Public Works, I think this is the entrance where a lot of boats will be using for the boat ramps and things of that nature. But I'd like to open up the floor to any questions that you may have.
Anyone have questions for Mr. McLaughlin? No questions? At this time, open public hearing. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rod McLean to speak against this proposal.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff. I'd like to ask you a question right off the get-go. Do any of you know how wide Fountain Lane is? And I take it by the deer in the headlights looks, you don't. Fountain Lane is 20 feet wide. It is not a thoroughfare. This will make it into a thoroughfare at least until the Sleepy Property, 54, 439, I think it is, Fountain Lane, the empty lot. It's going to make life difficult for the property owners, getting in and out, especially if you've got somebody trying to get in there with a boat. I don't know if any of you have tried to turn into Fountain Lane. If you're coming up from the bottom of the lake, that's a real tight turn. If you're coming from the north, it is also difficult to try to find a gap in the traffic to get over. And just from personal experience, I will tell you that if you get into the turn lane, you are quite likely to come across somebody haring down the road doing at least 35 to 40 miles an hour in the turn lane to go to Rockfish Road. So it's going to make life a little bit awkward. I hope to God that you do not make Fountain Lane the exit. There is a telephone pole, a telegraph pole, on the corner. It was recently hit and broken, and they had to come out and repair it. That is right on the edge of Main Street and Fountain Lane. I come yea close to it every time I come out of the road. Not because I'm trying to, but it's just there. It's something you have to put up with. I will guarantee to you some num nut pulling a trailer will take that pole out again, correction. They won't take the pole out. The pole will take their vehicle out. I did attend the Cumberland County hearing on this, and I asked for lighting to be put here. I definitely need a six-foot fence between my, our property and this parking lot. And because of your requirements, I understand you've got to put the fence up on the other side, on the empty gardener lot. I have already put up with the green monster at the playground that was put there. It was, for quite a period of time, a hangout for people experimenting in what fornication is and people doing drugs. Because we complained enough and the public took some more notice and the police took notice, that has gone away. But two fences in a parking lot, it's not going to take them more than two minutes to figure out that this is going to be another lover's lane. So I asked for the lights. But what I'm also going to ask for, if you put gates up on the lake park right now, you better put a gate up on this parking lot. And we need more police drive-throughs to ensure that people aren't up to nefarious acts in that parking lot, hidden between two six-foot fences. I hope I don't come across it. But it's up to you folks to ensure that I don't. And I, basically, I'm against it. I realize that's a losing battle, because you've already made your minds up. But give me a gate, give me some police protection, and give me the lights going down onto the property, not over onto my side, but down into the property. Thank you kindly.
And just to, to speak to one thing that I know that's in the future, is I know that we have plans for pedestrian crosswalk there at Fountain Johnson and Main.
That's great.
That's in the works also to improve the sidewalks there. The other thing is, my understanding is, to facilitate unloading boats, the entrance will be on the current entrance so they can go straight to the boat ramp. The parking would be then for the boat to be up on Fountain Lane, the new part, the Sleepy Lot. So the actual pulling in of boats and trailers onto that probably won't be happening because they want to take their boat directly to the, to Main Street. But that's the only comments I have as far as knowing that there are plans for pedestrian crosswalk.
I can make a note, ma'am. If you look at the plans, the plan is for the traffic to come in on Fountain Lane. That's the way that the lots are set up.
The thing what Mayor's talking about is those entrances don't appear to be entrances for trucks. It looks like you're saying the truck entrance for boats will be basically the main entrance off of Main Street.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Chancellor, can you walk me through exactly what a person in a truck and a trailer with a boat, they're going to go to the dock, right? They're going to unload their boat, and then how are they going, how are they going to navigate to get to this parking lot?
To be honest with you, I more than likely would defer that to Public Works, who is the project manager of this, but I will tell you, from a DOT standpoint, you know, we speak about zoning, but when we're talking about traffic concerns, we lean on the experts. DOT has not expressed any issues with this proposal. Again, they indicated that they would like for the entrance to be as furthest away from Main Street to allow for vehicles to stack, which is what you have here. I will also say with the request for lighting, that will be up to the board. I would just defer you to the other parks that we have in terms of any type of lighting that we have after hours. I'm not sure if we do. But in instances where there is a need for lighting, we, I've seen downlighting specified. This is what we did at Walmart. I'm not sure if that's conducive to a park, but that is your, your, your call. The buffering, as stated, would be required, but in terms of the operation of the boats and access, I probably would defer that to Public Works, as they are the project manager of this project, simply just facilitating the zoning.
If I'm not mistaken, in Phase Two of our lake park plan, that Phase Two did have the parking lot designed, and that parking lot was taken into consideration of the Sleepy Property. Of course, the Phase Two plan was not carried through, so, but I don't, I believe we can go back and look in that because it did design parking, if I'm not mistaken. I remember we, that was one of the focuses.
And I will say that, to the, the point about the, the grant we got for the sidewalks, there's a lot going on in this area. So, from a pedestrian standpoint, this is going to have a major enhancement at this intersection. Right now, you don't have any crosswalks, and you don't have any sidewalks on, across the street from the lake. So that actual grant puts four crosswalks at Johnson, Fountain Lane, and Main, a sidewalk from Johnson to Main, all the way down to Trey Street across the street, and a mid-block pedestrian crossing as well. So, I think what appears the town is trying to do is centralize or at least provide a better flow of vehicular traffic to the site while we're at the same time trying to balance the, the ability of having a harmonious balance between pedestrian and vehicular traffic at the same time. But I would like to point out, this is a park. A park is meant for a public use. We're actually in the process of trying to see if we can provide more parking, as we have, we do have severe parking issues all throughout this entire area. If you're talking about the golf course here, Trey Street and the lake, we're trying to find as many more, as many parking spaces as we can while creating a direct pedestrian connection between all these facilities. But I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware, this is not a commercial development. This is a park that's meant for public use.
Madam Mayor, may Don Cisco answer my question?
What, what, Mr. McLaughlin, we have to answer your question.
I think he was asking about the boats.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I mean, I don't think you finished asking it, but what were you saying?
Okay. Walk me through the diagram that's on, on the screen. When someone comes up to the lake with a boat and a trailer, they go down to the dock, they unload the boat. So now how, what are they going to do from there to get to this lot? Are they going to drive out of, of Hope Mills, Lake, and then go on Main Street and then go up Fountain Lane and come in? How are they going to access this?
Well, from my understanding, if they're coming in this way, they're coming right into the lake.
Mm-hmm.
So they could pretty much park here. I'm not real.
Nope. Ah, it's going to take you, Don, to do it. You'll, you'll see where I'm going once, once he does, once he does this.
No, I've not seen that drawing. I gotta say, I've not seen that drawing, so I'm not sure where.
That's what Dell did.
Dell did, okay. We're meeting with Dell Crawford tomorrow so we can do some tweaking on that. To answer your question, traffic will go in the normal entrance to the lake right now.
Right.
With their boats. They will unload their boats, and the intent then is for them to come back out on the Main Street.
Make a right.
Make a right onto Fountain Lane. And this will be one-way traffic from Fountain Lane back down into the park. So that way, when anybody leaves, they will leave the parking lot into the, the existing parking area and the boat ramp area, reload, and then exit out the, the exit, the existing exit.
So we're going to have two openings to this parking lot?
Yes, you're going to have one on Fountain Lane and one going down next to Big T's.
If you look on the back of that drawing, that line is straight. That's the reason it's, it's kind of confusing to me. This looks like there's, there's not an entrance out of the back, but it's, but it's actually a drive-through off of Fountain Lane.
It's a drive-through off of Fountain Lane. It's a one-way.
All the way through, yes, sir.
Drive-through.
Yeah, so where I'm going with this is, in accordance with the request for the lighting, I do agree that we need to have a gate there on Fountain Lane, too, to close that off like we do the main park. I do agree, and that's for, and that's for safety purposes, to close that gate. When the park closes, that gate closes, too.
Sure.
The same thing that we do down at Gulfview Greenway. We got an excellent gate down there that closes. So, that's why, that's where I'm going, Mayor, and that's why, why I wanted to make sure we were good on the flow. I mean, I hadn't seen this drawn either, Don, until I saw it in his packet.
Now, one thing to keep in mind when you're looking at this drawing, this is a site plan only. This is not the foreconstruction drawing for this.
Yeah. Can we do, can we put a gate there?
Well, we can't, yes, sir. We'll put a gate there, we'll put lighting in, you know, all the things that we need to. Right now, what is being proposed to the board is the location, essentially.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you, Don.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Cisco. At this time, we didn't close public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, is, any other comments or actions from the board?
Madam Mayor, I can make the motion.
Okay.
In case P 21- In case P twenty-one dash fifteen, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners vote to approve the rezoning request from R six residential to R fifteen residential, CZ, conditional zoning for recreation amusement, public-private, not operated as a business for profit, to include the conditional zoning conditions in the site plan and include the condition to add lighting. I'm going to add a gate here. The board finds the additional parking is needed and the subject property is vacant and available for public use.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. And one, just one for, uh, for clarification. I know that in, in most cases, we have to have an eight-foot buffer fence. Is that true in this case also?
Six. You can have up to seven, but it's typically six feet that they put up.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none. Commissioner Legg, you in favor?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor. Okay. All right. Seeing, seeing, seeing none opposed, thank you. All right, next we have on our agenda is public comments. And again, we'll invite them to the microphone. The first would be Greeley Mitchell.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff. Melissa, I want to thank you so very much for the contribution that you made to this town. And I thank you so very much for your support. The things that we did together to get the park out there fixed and improved, you was a tremendous advocate. Thank you so very much. And the veterans, thank you as well. And I want to thank Don Cisco and his team, his staff. Thank you very much. Uh, I drove by this evening, I noticed that we now have sidewalk going up to the monument. And that has been a long time coming. That is amazing improvement. Now, I can take a veteran disabled out of their car, don't have to worry about barking down in the sand. And that is a major improvement. Thank you so very much. I was going to talk about a couple of other things tonight, but I thought about, you know what? We're going to finish this on a positive note. Because with the improvements that we're making, the good things that's going on in this town, I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you all so very much and keep doing the good work that you're doing. And if we keep working this way, Hope Mills is going places. And I want to be on that ride, to ride with them to the place of positiveness. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we have Dell Ivy. And I believe that he actually was, had signed up because of Krampden. Okay, and then Rod, Rod McLean?
I see I'm starting at a debit. Madam Mayor, Commissioners.
Wait a second, let's get Ms. Starling to start it. She didn't. There you go.
I pay my taxes for three minutes, I want my three minutes. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Town Staff, thank you very much indeed. I have not heard any comments from the Town of Hope Mills in reference to the upcoming elections. I understand that there are some towns that, where the election basis, they need the results from the census. Hope Mills does not require results from a census in order to conduct an election. I would like to hear the Commissioners, the Mayor, and the Town Staff come up and issue some sort of statement or some sort of where we stand for the election of Hope Mills. And I said, we do not need a census in order to conduct a, uh, an election in Hope Mills.
Mr. McLean, I can answer that for you because I was in a conference this past week. Those, those areas that have districts, which would be like federal, runs on districts, those are the areas that would have to wait for numbers and counts to have those districts if necessary redrawn. Hope Mills is a municipality that runs citywide. So it does not, the census does not affect us. So our election would be, unless for some reason the whole election was delayed, our election would be on time because of not needing to have a census to determine it.
Madam Mayor, that is the best news I have probably heard since the start of the pandemic. Thank you very much indeed.
You're welcome. All righty then, that concludes public comments. From our consent agenda, is there anything that you would like moved to our new business? Or would y'all get a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is before you?
Motion to approve as is.
Have a motion to approve, you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed.
I'm going to try to put my hand out.
I saw that one this time. All right, this time we have new business. And the first item on new business, consideration of accepting the bid proposal in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars from Cardinal Landscaping in the installation of a rain garden at Town Lake. And who gets this? Lamarcos? Okay. And this will be the time tab eight.
Madam Mayor, Board of Commissioners, this project is consistent with the, um, the request to beautify the lake property. Approximately ten years ago, First Citizen donated twenty thousand dollars towards the beautification of the lake property. This right here fulfills that, um, one, but then also it addressed a drainage issue where there's an underground spring. So it addresses that runoff and that flooding. But it also beautifies the area with flood-tolerant trees, shrubs, um, ground cover, and perennials. One other thing I'd like to mention, there are approximately four trees along the, um, between the, the existing, um, bike way and the road that, um, that will more than likely have to come out because, one, they are in bad shape, but, two, um, they are somewhat diseased according to the, one of the contractors. So just want to make everybody aware that, um, we, there will be about three, possibly four trees that will come down. But knowing that we will replace them with the four large trees that are shown on the, um, on, on the plan there.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Lamarcos, are those trees undermining the sidewalk with roots as well?
The existing trees?
Yes, sir.
They are, they are. And, and, and probably when, when Public Works come in with the sidewalk, you know, when they come back in to, to do their forms and everything, they're probably going to have to dig down to the point where, you know, whatever damage hasn't been done to those, um, those struggling trees now, they're probably going to die anyway because of, you know, the intrusiveness of the sidewalk, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Lamarcos, which one of the two projects is going to start first? And, and I think I'm, I'm kind of piggybacking off Commissioner Legg with those trees? Because I understand Audrey's going to do the sidewalk, is that correct?
And that'd be a Public Works commission, um, question.
Ah, maybe.
Based on scheduling, I do know that it won't be till mid to late April before we can begin the rain garden project, just based on everybody's workload and what, what landscaping contractors are up against now.
So the trees and the tree roots are... I didn't want them to impact the, the sidewalk replacement, I guess.
Right, well, and, and what I...
So that's the reason I'm asking, which?
Well, what I plan on doing before they begin the landscaping, I plan on taking, having those trees taken out anyway. So at, at any rate, they're, they're probably going to be gone before we do the rain garden anyway. So if, if, if our guys are going to start in mid-April, we are going to contract with, um, you know, one of our tree removal people to go ahead and take those trees out in preparation for the rain garden installation.
The, the multi-use path, which is what we're calling it, the multi-use walking path. It's my understanding, and, and Don can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that Audrey is in the process of, they're, they're, they've done a site visit, I think it's in my manager's report.
Yeah, it is.
They've done, they've done a site visit. They are preparing to give us a, to give us a bid. Well, not a bid, but they're, they're going to give us an estimate.
Okay.
There are a lot of things, a number of things that we have to take into consideration and that they have to take into consideration. One of those is there's going to be a considerable amount of grading work that's going to have to be done because of the slope.
Yeah.
And also the length of the path. And then also having to deal with DOT and possible lane closure.
Okay.
So there may have to be some nighttime work. Because we don't want concrete trucks on our grass and ruining our sprinklers, our sprinkler systems and our grass. So there's, there's all of those things that they've got to factor in. So I'm not sure, they didn't give any indication when they would be giving that estimate to Don. But they are in process of looking at that.
So is it fair to say, when I look at this, this project, what I, what I, what I wouldn't like to see is we have this project finished, and then the replacement of the multipurpose track come in and tear up some of the work that's already been done by Cardinal Landscaping. That's kind of where I'm going, Lamarcos.
Okay, so...
Because I don't, they do beautiful work, and this is a beautiful project.
I would say we're...
But I hate to see it lost, or some of it lost.
Well, we're coordinated. Um, I, I think, I think the pressure was more or less coming from me wanting them to get started. Because what I don't want to happen is, um, we'd like to go ahead and catch it at, you know, late winter, early spring. What I don't want them to do is be planting plant materials in the summer where it's hard to establish and keep them watered. So that, that's just been my window. You know, as long as we're not in the middle of summer installing plant materials, because it wouldn't be fair to them to have to try to keep those plant materials living because that is going to be a requirement before we agree to take over, you know, the maintenance of them. As far as the, the edge of the bed, we are a good five feet away from where the proposed multipurpose path is going to be. So there is a little bit of a buffer. We're not right adjacent or abutting the, um, the multipurpose path. So there will be a little bit of wiggle room. But at any rate, we'll, we'll coordinate that with Public Works.
I think it fits with, with Don and Public Works.
Yeah, I just, I just want to caution that.
Okay.
You know, because I'd hate to, to see one project take out the good work of another, and then we have to go in and put more money into a project that, in the planning process, we could have decided which one comes first. I mean, the tree's going to come out regardless.
Right.
And then, then I think there's a lot of sloping that's got to be done, too. So I leave that to the experts, and that's you and Don Cisco. But, uh, that was just my concerns, and thank you, Mayor.
And I just want you to know that this is a project that has been out there for so long that this just makes me, my heart happy because we've looked at this since, uh, two thousand and ten. So for this to be done, and then the mar, the marquee to be complete, so hopefully it's all going to culminate about the same time. And I think that's wonderful because these, these are things that have been in the works for such a long time. So I appreciate this, and I, I like the design, and I, I like the fact that it's going to eliminate some of the flooding that we have, too. And I think that's wonderful, so thank you.
Thank you.
And Sarah Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Ms., Ms. Commissioner Edwards.
Just going to make a motion. Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid proposed, proposal and authorize Town Manager to execute, uh, the agreement with Cardinal Landscaping and install a drain garden at Town Hall.
Town Lake.
You got it. Oh, come on, Town Lake. I didn't get a gin done at Peter's, so I don't know what's going on.
The amount.
Okay, for nine, nineteen thousand, seven hundred and forty.
Okay, and then I think that the piece of that is that was the money that was supplied by First Citizens Bank for this corner.
I second the motion.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you very much, and thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, I know. When you made the motion, it's like I know you didn't know the amount.
Next, we have a discussion, consideration regarding renaming of the Town of Hope Mills Veterans Memorial Park. And this was requested by Commissioner Bell Flowers.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have a discussion about, about an action that the board, that, that we took as a board in our last meeting. And it's out of respect to Jim and Jean Clark. And it's totally out of respect to Veterans Affairs Commission Chairman Greeley Mitchell and, and his committee. And out of the, our, and respect out of our local Veterans of Foreign Wars VFW Post Ten Six Thirty. I think maybe we were a little premature when we were talking about honoring Jim and Jean Clark about renaming the park, which is Veterans Memorial Park after them. Some years ago, after Jim passed, we had a discussion about how to honor him and his service to the Hope Mills community, and especially with the memorial park that was established in ninety-two, ninety-three. And at that point, the VFW had decided that we would honor them in, in a memorial monument. Uh, and Jean was, and knew that, and we were just going to wait until she passed as well, and then memorialize and honor them in a monument like we do just about every, every other veteran that we've had pass in that park. We've got a number of monuments that are in that park with all, with, with veterans' names that have passed over the years that have contributed greatly to Hope Mills community. And the reason I say this mainly is because, because when you look at other veterans' memorial parks, they don't, they're not designated by any one veteran name. They are designated like downtown as Freedom Memorial Park. And we all know that Don Talbert was very instrumental behind that park and still is today. In Raleigh, we have North Carolina Veterans Park. In Cary, we have Veterans Memorial Park. Just about every municipality in town has their, their parks, and they name them all Veterans Memorial Park, and not after one individual. To even include Arlington National Cemetery. So I bring this up because I, I think maybe we were premature at taking that action, and sometimes we can get caught in that motion. I know I do because of, of the service and the time that I had spent with Jim and Jean Clark. So I would like the board to, to consider rescinding that vote and leaving it the name of Veterans Memorial Park, Hope Mills Veterans Memorial Park, out of respect and honor to all of our veterans that are past, current, and future.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate Mr. Bell Flowers' comments. I brought this to the board. Uh, I'm on the, I'm doing liaison with the Veteran Affairs Committee. And they've talked about it for some time, like I said at the last meeting. And, um, I was asked to bring it to the board, and that's what I've done. No ill intention on any of the veterans. I'm not a veteran myself, but I respect each and every one of them. And I think that what should happen, since we got a Veteran Affairs Committee, is since we've already took action and voted on it, send it back to the, at this point, just send it back to the Veteran Affairs Committee for their recommendation, and let the Veteran Affairs Committee work through this and come back to the board with what they want, with what the Veteran Affairs Committee wants. So that would be, that would be my recommendation, is not, not change our vote right now, but send it back to the Veteran Affairs Committee for recommendation. And let them work through it as a committee.
Is, would that be all right with you, Commissioner Bell Flowers?
That'd be fine.
Okay, so at this point, we're not changing anything. We're going to refer it to the Veterans Affairs Commission. And then y'all can, when you meet, bring it back to the board.
The chairman, the, the chairman of that committee's here tonight, so.
Yeah.
Do we need a second on that? Or is that just a consensus?
There's just consensus.
I think consensus.
Because I didn't make a motion.
That'd be fine.
And I want to go on record, too, I, I'd like to go on record, too, as saying, like I said before, no ill will toward any of the veterans. Like I said, I'm sure all of us, as well as me, we respect everything they do and everything that they've done for the community. And they keep us free and allow us to sit here tonight and, and talk about this. So, um, I just, I'm, I'm the liaison of that committee, and, and I feel like we should send it back to them because they're the one that asked for it first. So that's why I want to send it back to them.
Okay.
Commissioner Marley, I thank you for your words, and I thank you for your kind words toward our veterans. And just know that as we sit here tonight, my grand... words toward our veterans. And just know that as we sit here tonight, my granddaughter is at Fort Jackson as a member of the United States Army, and she is two weeks away from graduating basic training. Thank you very much for that.
Okay, at, at this time, we have, we had the good fortune to be in conferences last week, most, most all of the week, and Mr. McLaughlin and myself both attended the Main Street Conference. But I ask if he would give an update on that conference, and then I'll give you an update on the other conference. So I turn over to Mr. McLaughlin for an update on the Main Street Conference.
And one thing I'd like to just point out, this is my third, I think. This is, it's actually known as the largest conference of this type in the nation. It's really, really cool, and I guess everybody was kind of concerned about how they were going to do it virtually. But it was themed "Pivoting for Prosperity." So the 2021 Main Street Conference was held virtually from March ninth to the eleventh. In general, the main focus of the Main Street program is to help build more resilient towns, downtowns, that are better equipped to face the next challenges of a growing and diverse economy. With a four-point approach to downtown revitalization, the program was developed to combat the negative impacts of development of malls and strip centers that attracted anchor businesses and relocated them from downtown areas. With that in, the 2021 Main Street Conference explored a commitment to local as one of the keys to economic development in small cities, and is not only locally-owned businesses, but locally, it's tied to locally, locally invested, investments in general. As the largest statewide downtown revitalization conference in the country this year, the Main Street Program celebrated its twenty-year anniversary. Some of the keynote speakers that were there were from the Johnson County Visitors Bureau, the Town of Chapel Hill, Belmont, Main Street Downtown Directors, the North Carolina League of Municipality was, was there, Blowing Rock Chamber of Commerce. Now, all of these were keynote speakers who actually had individual presentations. City of Morganton, North Carolina Department of Public Health, and Alexander County Economic Development Corporation, to name a few. Now, in terms of discussions I attended, I was super nerd. I looked at all of it. But I tended about, I was popping in and out of multiples at one time, so they had it set up where you can just, and it's still up. I'm not if you sure if you know that, Mayor. The website is still up, so I was looking at some of the videos earlier today, even though the conference is over. But some of the sessions I attended or participated in, Tips to Simplifying Marketing for You and Your Merchants. It's a session that included marketing strategies focusing on increasing the impact of downtown merchants' marketing efforts. Making Main Street, Main Street a Destination was another session. This is a webinar from the NC Main Street and Rural Planning Center, who is also doing our Gateway Study. Their program is titled NC Main to Main Trail, which is a virtual trail highlighting designated Main Street communities. It's another session, Great Trails Plan and Downtown. This is a session by NC Department of Transportation's Integrated Mobility Division, focused on a statewide trail network with goals of connecting state park cities and downtowns. There was another keynote address that I was really interested in, Resiliency for Locally-Owned Businesses. This was a session that centered around the kinds of economic stimuli that cost little to nothing and opportunities to do more with less. Five more where all trails lead to downtown, diversity and inclusion, nuts and bolts of public finances, is downtown development ready, and pivoting to virtual events. The reason why this is so important is because my goal is to have Trey Street officially instituted into the Main Street Program. We've been talking to NC Commerce about this for a number of years. It's about a three-year commitment. They're probably watching this, but their, us partnering then with the Gateway Study is basically a doorway in to partnering then with this Main Street Program. So we have a few things going on, but these programs really, really provide a wealth of knowledge and information to people trying to do it. We're trying to do it, our Trey Street area. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And I attended one about housing. The reason why, I printed it, too, just in case anybody wanted to see it. But I went to one about planning for sustainable housing, and that was for, in cases of looking for ways of helping homeless people, because as populations grow, they're looking for ways of sustaining them in some type of home, but also helping people during these times to get housing. But that was a part of that conference. At the same time, I did include, I've got the other two conferences that I attended. One was, I was pointed to the National League of Cities Community and Economic Federal Development Committee, and that meeting was held on Sunday. I included in your packet the information from there. It was spent, a lot of times, it was council members, mayors, other people that were part of the committee. And this committee had a series of things that they talked about as far as looking at how important it is for us to be an advocacy for not just our state, but for all the things that all the states need. So we talked about community and economic development, about energy and environment, finance, human development, information technology, public safety, transportation. And this was, this happened on Sunday, and it was a three-hour Zoom meeting with a small group of people, but it was very informative. It also spoke to us in reference to the information that was going to be coming forth with American Rescue Plan Act. And what they did there was gave us talking points to talk to our legislators that were in Washington, DC. So at the conclusion of that meeting, the next four days were spent with that, then it tied into Main Street. But the other part that I think is important is discussion of the economic recovery update from the National League of Cities. This conference from seven, from the March seventh through ninth, the importance of that is the way they set it up, and because I was a member of that federal committee, on March the tenth, I actually was with, there's six of us that met one-on-one with Congressman Burr. And during that opportunity, we were able to ask questions. He answered questions, and he spent a good, I guess about thirty, forty-five minutes with us by Zoom. And then he talked about, of course, he said that this 1.9 trillion was the most Congress had ever appropriated in history, and he wanted to make sure that we got broadband. He was, he just went through things that were important to him, but he did let us know that he was concerned about how we were going to pay it back. We then spoke to Senator Tillis at eleven-thirty on the, the same, on the eleventh. And with Senator Tillis, he talked about the way the money was being distributed across the United States. But then he talked about the fact that this one is more important than it has been before, because the money actually will be distributed to the municipalities. So in the other COVID relief money, the other care package money, it went to the county or went to the state, and then they determined how it was distributed. In some cases, and in some states, that money hasn't made it yet to where it was supposed to go because of the processes. Well, now, this current money will be distributed directly to the cities, the municipalities. And there is, I sent the link to the board. It's officially unofficial, but it looks like, in the case of Hope Mills, what we're, what it's based on is per capita, and it's also based on the size of Hope Mills. But it looks like by June fifteenth, we would get the first installment, and then before the year's out, we'd get the second installment. And, you know, looks like it's going to be $4,640,000 total, $2,300,000, $2,320,000 by June fifteenth. Those monies can be spent, and, and they talked about for transit, for broadband, the, I don't know that the limitations you can, you know, I think roads, there's lots of things and lots of opportunities, but when those monies come, they'll come directly to Hope Mills. Every town is listed on that sheet. I don't have it with me, but I did send the email when it was sent to me, because it was sent out to us, the members of that committee, as soon as they voted on it and soon as the details were there. But just know that it looks like that we will benefit from this, and this is funds that we can put in place for those needs that are above what we normally have.
Did you need it?
You got, you printed it. Good job. But it was, so, right now, that's the, what they've, what's printed, and they said until it's actually distributed. But it looks like over $2 million we would get by June fifteenth. And again, I think it was tomorrow, I have a Zoom conference with Congressman Hudson, and that again is another plus from, from being a part of this, because it's, it's actually going to be a two-on-one. He will be there, and what he will do is talk to us and answer questions and, and offer suggestions. But we were able to at least have those times that we were listened to, and we did talk about strategic progress, and we talked about opportunity, and we talked about how we can minimize incentives and overhaul our communities. So good information. All righty, next on our agenda is the manager's report. Do you have anything to add?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, the reminders for upcoming meetings, staff comments? Okay. Any other staff comments? And again, we welcome you, Mr. Zale. This is, we're earlier than we thought as far as getting to this point. We were worried that tonight was going to be lengthy, but we're, we're moving right along. And then official comments? Any official comments?
Melissa, thanks so much. For the service that you've given this town and for the work you've done for this board. I want to be the first to congratulate you. Of course, I'm not, but I'd like to be on your retirement, and I hope you have many, many wonderful, beautiful days ahead of you. Mr. Zale, again, thank you for being with us. We're not always this way. Sometimes we're worse.
Sometimes we're better.
Sometimes we're better. I've got a note from, what is in my glasses? Put it in the pocket. From the Historical Preservation Committee, where they wanted to thank each and every commissioner and the mayor for the work that you've done and allotting funds to them to work on the Thomas Oatman Chapel, to include the bathrooms that, that are going to be constructed there. They're, they were tickled to death to get the news that, that money had been budgeted to them. And on their behalf, I want to say thank you very much, as I work with them as well. That's all from me, Madam Mayor. I'm quick tonight.
Okay. Anything, Commissioner Marley?
I'm, I'm pretty good. I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff and Melissa for reaching out and, and starting, trying to get something started with the bike path again. I do appreciate that. I'd love to see that. I would.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got a few things.
Okay.
Just like to thank everybody that came tonight. And again, it was a busy weekend on the Gulf, on the Gulf View Greenway. The track was full off and on. But there was, there was interesting dilemma about four-thirty on Sunday. Toward the end of the track, if you go all the way down before it takes a left to go down the slope some, there was a group of, looked like family members that were flying some three- or four-foot jets and some drones. But that wasn't the interest, although the airshow was pretty cool. There was two Hope Mills police cars there. And there were some folks that were walking the track, and, and I didn't know anything about it, because I was like, okay. They were talking to each other that, I guess, some type of backpack had been found or abandoned or something on the golf course, and that's why they were there. And the, the folks that saw all that action, they were really pleased that, that the police department was there. That was the takeaway, and that's what I wanted to share, is that as busy as it is, when something like that happens, and then our police department is there, and I, and like I said, I don't know what's in the backpack. All I know is what I heard. I didn't even talk to the officers. But, but they were noticed. And finally, into the road, Melissa. Happy trails. And just know that season five is coming back for Yellowstone. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else?
Melissa, you already know how I feel, and I'm not going to elaborate on it, but you will be missing. You'll never be precoced.
I'd like to just say I have enjoyed working with Melissa as well, even though it's been a short amount of time. There is a tremendous amount of progress and work that's being made, and so I'd like to thank all the town staff for that. I would also like to thank Pastor Mathis and everybody that supported the Prime Movers and their COVID testing site, which was last Saturday. And I also got an inbox this weekend of an officer, oh gosh, I think his last name is Cannon, that a friend was showing me that he was outside playing basketball with her boys, and she really appreciated the engagement. I sent the picture to Chief, and I think he told me his name is Officer Cannon. I can't remember. But when something is positive, I think we should, should note it, and I think there's a lot of great positive things going on in this community and this town. And I think that that's it.
Okay. One thing that I have that it's tentative, but I think it's going to happen, and that's the Mayor's Youth Leadership has chosen March twenty-seventh from one to three to meet at Southview High School. And if, as far as I know, their road adoption signs will be in, and they're going to, they've got parents and teachers that are going to help supervise, but they're going to clean from Southview to Biscuitville, both sides of the road. And they've got the, they'll have the supportive DOT, but as soon as it's official, I'll let Chief of Cherdon know, because I believe that, you know, that'd be an area that I'd like to have somebody over there. But it's supposed to be March twenty-sixth, a Saturday from one to three, and they, they are going to participate with the town on the town's cleanup. This is just done so they can make a big to-do over adopting the highway. So I'd like to include that. And also, I'd let you know that you may be retiring, but you're not going to be too far from me, because I go over that way a lot. So I don't ride horses very well, but I might just have to learn. But I do appreciate everything. And at this time, do we have a motion?
Yes, ma'am. Motion to adjourn.
No, sir. No, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to consult with the attorney to protect, to protect the attorney-client privilege pursuant.
We got another one?
No, yeah, we got another one. Pursuant to GS 14331811A3 related to property acquisition, 14331811A5.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a motion, a second, if you will. All please go to the back conference room, and we'll try to make this quick and be right back. At this time, I'll call our meeting back to order. Do we have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of the closed session to such time as the release of the information will no longer frustrate the purpose of the closed session, and further no action was taken.
Have a motion, have a second? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed, do we have another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We'll see you.
You're welcome.
See you soon.